I am calling this meeting to order. This is the Parks and Environmental Sustainability Committee meeting held on Tuesday, February 27, 2004, commencing at 4:33. Council members in attendance are Councilmember Salah Houdin, Councilmember Stewart, Councilmember Forsyth, I'm sorry, Council Vice President Forsyth, Councilmember Anderson, and Council President Kritzer. And I am Councilmember Nueva Camina. There are eight items on the agenda today, and I would like to move, switch seven and eight on the agenda. Does anybody oppose this? Seeing no opposition, and we're going to be swapping seven and eight today. The first item on the agenda is... The approval of contract amendment with MANG Analysis in CM 24053. And bringing that with us is Director Hamilton and Jenny Liebeck.
Great, thank you for having me this evening. So this item will add $100,000 to the MANG consultant agreement. This would bring the total project cost to $430,000, or the total contract cost to $430,000. And so with this added budget, MANG will complete a grant-funded solar and energy storage feasibility study. This will allow us to basically enhance our feasibility, our facility condition assessment, and decarbonization strategy work that's already underway through the Parks Department. So again, this contract amendment would be 100% grant-funded. And so today, I'm just requesting council's approval to add this item to the March 5 consent agenda.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, Ms. Liebeck. Always great to see you and exciting to hear about an additional $100,000 that are available. Could you talk to us about how the five sites identified, how you went about choosing those, and what you might hope to learn about them?
Yeah, so these five sites in particular are sites that we might use in emergency response situations, so fire stations. We did not include the, or we conditionally included some of the MOC, not sure where it would be in their redevelopment process. And then some of the things we're hoping to identify from this is just, you know, space for solar panels, whether, again, the site is even conducive to this type of technology upgrades that might need to be made. I think this site in particular, the City Hall campus, is a really exciting opportunity from kind of a microgrid perspective. And so this is really where I think there's the largest opportunity is City Hall, Public Safety Building, and then with the community center as well. But yeah, so the feasibility study will kind of help us narrow down. We're not assuming that all five sites will be basically, you know, ready to go, but that will basically narrow it down to likely one project.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Council President Kritzer.
I think this is exciting and always great to get grant funding. In terms of the use of this going forward, just because you can give us the vision of where we'll use this information, are we likely to kind of be able to complete this this year so that we could use it to budget for increasing use of solar in the upcoming budget?
That's a great question. The CIP budget is, you know, that process is moving along and obviously has a little bit different timeline than our normal budgeting process. The one thing, too, that I'm really trying, keen on is being able to access state funds as well. So you may have noticed that there was a state solicitation that just came out recently. We're basically trying to position ourselves to be eligible for that round of funding in the future. And again, being able to integrate it into future CIP processes or kind of planning processes as well. So, but we just need the findings from the analysis to know what we can integrate into the CIP.
Great. So what I'm hearing is this will enable us in the next couple of years to be hopefully putting more solar on our buildings and doing storage.
Yes.
Great.
And if I might just also insert further council's information, we will be also bringing the first portion of the facilities condition assessment for a study session actually in April. And so this additional work by Jenny and MANG Analysis will absolutely help kind of round out the facilities condition assessment. But in order for Quinn and our team to be able to perhaps do some integration of our findings in the facilities condition assessment and begin to move forward on some of the actual findings around the buildings themselves, which have been assessed by, already by MANG, we'll be having a study session with you in April on those. So just so you know, Jenny's going to be continuing this work, but we are, for the purposes of these conversations, and also some clear, I think is a little more clear, if we talk about the buildings in their current state and issues that we might have to address, and then the opportunities for the sustainability portion that Jenny is going to be working on. So just for council's information, we'll be doing a study session in April.
Are there any other questions for this first item? Okay, thank you very much. And we are good for consent. Moving on to our second item on the agenda. The second item has seven parts to it, and all of these are, because the threshold for maximum amount payable is $75,000, then all of these are coming. And we have with us Jeff Hagan and Zach Hoover joining us today.
Yeah, good afternoon. I'll introduce this item really quickly. So I'm joined with staff today. We brought contracts like this toward, forward, forward last year, also for approval. And it is because we have reached the $75,000 maximum for instructional services agreement. So I'll let my staff discuss that, but just want to remind council that this is something that we have brought to you actually for the last couple of years for approval of these contracts for our summer camps.
I'm actually going to hand it over to our recreation supervisor, Jeff Hagan.
Hello, members of the council. I'm Jeff Hagan, Recreation Supervisor. I have seven memos before you, all of similar in nature. We're seeking to increase the maximum amount payable for each of these seven summer camp contractors beyond the $75,000 annual threshold. I'd like to start by noting that the $75,000 threshold was set back in 2012 under Resolution 1376 and was reaffirmed in 2018 under Resolution 1503. The seven contract service providers include trackers at $160,000, Nature Vision at $130,000, Eastside Skills Samurai and Snapology at $120,000, Skyhawks Sports and I-9 Sports at $100,000, as well as TOPS Tennis, Tennis Outreach Program at $100,000. So we anticipate each of these contracts will exceed the $75,000 maximum payout, and that's due to community demand for the programs that we've been seeing, and also with some price increases and inflation over the last several years. All of these contracts live in our RAF, our Recreation Activity Fund. Therefore, to increase the maximum allowable payout would allow us to serve a greater number of kids while in turn increasing net revenue in the Recreation Activity Fund. To surpass the $75,000 maximum threshold requires council approval to authorize the mayor to sign the agreements. Today, we hope to seek, or we seek council approval to put forth these seven contracts on the consent agenda for the March 5 business meeting. And we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much, team. This is always a fun one to come back. I want to check in on the story of the pandemic recovery that we've been hearing the past couple of summers. And as you said so eloquently, Jeff, the reason that we need to approve these on our next business meeting is because we're going to have so many people enjoying summer. So how are we feeling about the recovery and the continued growth? Have we achieved a new baseline? Do you, do you think we've reached a new baseline in terms of summer camp planning?
Yeah, so last summer, we had our highest, highest summer camp numbers ever, Jeff?
That is correct.
Yeah, so last year, we hit kind of a new high. Part of that was due to the fact that we saw a really large need for full-day summer camps. And so we've increased the number of full-day summer camps that we do and have asked our providers to do the same, which also increases their costs, increases the contract payouts and all of that. You asked how recovery is going. I think, I feel very confident to say that our department is particularly in the recreation portion is fully recovered. We've brought back the recreation staff. Our buildings are all fully open, and we'll be opening the new community center. Camps are running full tilt. We had, I believe, an 84% fill rate last summer for summer camps. Is that about right?
That's accurate.
Yeah, and a very low cancellation rate. So prior to the pandemic, it was very common for us to actually cancel camps because of low enrollment, not very common, more common than it is now. That's not something that we do often anymore because we have such well-run programs and the community continues to come back for those.
Yeah, that's awesome. Thank you so much. That leads to my second and final question. Since you mentioned all the facilities are going to be up and running, do you anticipate any of the summer camp providers running program out of the Redmond Senior and Community Center this year?
It's a really great question. I have asked staff that we don't use the Senior and Community Center full tilt for summer camps this summer. It will really only be fully operational, and I'll talk more about this later in this meeting, at the beginning of May, probably not full tilt until the beginning of June. And so we really would like to get that building up and going, get our senior programs resettled back into that facility, open our active recreation, get staff on their feet before we inundate it with a summer full of camp kids. And we also really want to make sure that we're being mindful to our commitment to our senior programs. And one of the things that we have talked about throughout this entire process was the prioritization of those spaces for seniors during the days. And so figuring out what does that balance look like? How can we activate that space for some of our summer camps while not displacing our seniors over the summers as well? So we just felt like it will make more sense for us to look at that for coming seasons as opposed to this season.
Understood. Thank you.
Councilmember Salah Houdin.
Yeah, thank you so much. Just want to say, it's really great to see I-9 Sports as one of the providers. That was actually my first job as a site manager there. How are these providers or these contractors selected? And is there, you know, looking, forecasting to next summer, the summer after that? Not saying anything's wrong with any of these providers, but is there a way to see the data at which ones are more popular? If there's a, you know, a need for, just thinking for specific communities like cricket, like a provider for cricket and looking at programs for that? Is that something forecasted for the future?
Yeah, that's a great question, and you'll be happy to know that we have added a cricket camp this summer. So we're excited about that. We started a RFP process in the fall, so really, summer camps for us is a year-round proposition. We collected right around 50 organizations' responses, which 20 of those were new and around 30 returning contractors. So nearly all the contractors we had in previous year or last year have come back. And out of the 20 new ones we received, we evaluated those, and we have some limitations regarding space and things. And we're able to accept about seven or eight of those new ones, and cricket was actually one of those. So that, that is how they were evaluated.
And I'd like to add to that as well, council member. We also collect surveys and we look at data each year. And so there have been times where we've had issues with providers and perhaps have taken a year off from cooperating with them because it's really important to us that our camps feel like a safe, accessible space for all of our community. And sometimes we can't control all of that, right? That's kind of the blessing and the curse of contractors. And so we do continually evaluate them, and when issues come up, we work with those contractors very closely. If we're able to come to an agreement and figure out a path forward, we continue to work with them. But there have been contractors before that we've either said, I think this is where we part ways, or hey, let's take a year off and evaluate again.
Council President Kritzer.
So just as a clarification, we're seeing contracts just for ones where we wanted to increase the capacity, but there's a much longer list of ones that are below 75K that we don't have to approve?
That's accurate.
What's the, what is the total number of different types of camps? Do you know? Have it offhand?
I believe it's 35 contractors that we'll be working with this summer. Only seven of those reached the $75,000 threshold. And then we also have our own in-house camps where we hire the staff and organize those camps as well.
Great, thanks.
Councilmembers Salah Houdin.
Yeah, one quick follow-up, just knowing that there are roughly 35 contractors, where is all the information shared out that these are available to the community during the summer?
Yeah, well, do you want to take that?
Sure. So we instituted the competitive RFP process, I believe, three years ago. Jeff was reminding me right, right before we came on. And so it's on our website. So we have a one sheet. We actually give a marketing brochure to contractors and say, hey, what do you get when you contract with the City of Redmond? It's social media, it's marketing, it's customer experience, et cetera. So it's all on our, our website. Happy to share that with you.
Can I clarify, were you asking for the contractors to know or for the community to know?
For the community.
Yeah, so we...
It is helpful to know.
Yeah, so we do a comprehensive marketing plan. Our team does. They work with communications. We will, you'll start to see banners and A-frames and yard signs, and we'll open up registration for residents...
Late March.
Late March, and then for non-residents, early April. So residents do get priority registration. So we do a pretty large marketing campaign. And then this year actually will be particularly unique because we are also switching our recreation software provider, and that's actually going to coincide with our registration for summer camp. But, so people are able to go into our systems and view camps by either age or locations or, you know, full day, half day, interest, all of those ways. And so they can kind of browse through the offerings before they, they open for registration as well.
Are there any other questions?
Well, I am very happy to see our, our programs expanding and flexing with our changing needs as a community. So thank you for all the work that you've done on this.
And we are good to move that to consent. And on for the third item on our agenda, the approval of consultant agreement with Claris Strategy. And Director Hamilton is going to stay with us and present. And now we're going to welcome Mr. David Tuchek. Welcome.
Good afternoon, council. This item is also a Parks item, and it actually sits within our Facilities Division. Our Facilities Manager is off today, and so Dave is going to be taking this item. This item is for a contract for a plan that was in last budget. So this past budget, it was approved in the budget process for us to do a full building security strategic plan. And so I'm going to hand it off to Dave, but we are seeking for this to also go on consent.
Hello, council members. Dave Tuchek, we're here today seeking your approval of a consultant agreement with Claris Strategy for the development of the building security strategic plan in the amount of $199,692. The project outcomes, a consultant will assess citywide buildings for public safety and future security upgrades. As part of this project, the consultant will provide a security assessment report and a security master plan. City buildings included in this project are the following. So all of our fire stations, the Public Safety Building, City Hall, City Hall parking garage, Public Works and Parks MOC Municipal Campus, or MOC Campus. We have 12 buildings there. We have 17 water and wastewater sites will be part of this plan, and then the community centers. Project timeline, the goal is to initiate the project this May, and the final building security strategic plan to be completed in August of this year. Following the completion of the plan, the findings will be used to inform future CIP and operations budgets. Final council approval for this consultant agreement is scheduled for next week at the council business meeting on March 5. Any questions?
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much. I appreciate this update, Mr. Tuchek and Director Hamilton. Just a note for the council, this item actually got me curious, and I, and I spoke with COO files. We funded a lot of studies in this current budget that are then going to inform what we build out for the next budget and the CIP. So actually, the directors have been looking at that recently, too. The studies that are on track or where the progress is. So COO files offered to get back in touch with council with an accounting, if you were, of how all of the studies are going. So thank you so much. My question, two questions. So Director Hamilton, you have a great habit of sharing like this whole packet with us, with the consultants and everything. I just noticed that this is a firm from California, very Californian-focused. Could you speak a little bit to why a firm from so far away for this project?
Yeah, we went through a competitive RFP process, and they were able to show us projects that they've done prior that are similar, as well as really spoke to how they're able to help us create really a strategic plan, as well as take input from staff, because that's really who their customer is for this one. And so we had, I believe, seven RFPs come through for that process. And so it was a pretty competitive process, and it was really important for us to bring somebody on who has done this type of work before. We don't currently have a consistent security system at all of our buildings. Some of our fire stations are on a different system than City Hall is. And even the system that our current City Hall is on has some challenges. And so it's really, this firm proved to us through their process, as well as previous projects that they've done, that they're going to be able to help us really vet out what is the correct system for us and what is the path forward to implement that plan.
Cool. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. And then just in terms of being, you know, good stewards of what's coming up for us, you mentioned that the MOC is going to be included, obviously something that is planned for redevelopment in the near term. So how do you think that that will influence kind of the, how the project will be approached considering that site?
I think that's a really good question. So there will always be an MOC. There will always be gates, and there will always be access points and buildings. And so even if what we're looking at right now are some of the current facilities, it will help inform that redevelopment as we really look at what are the security needs out at the MOC. The buildings themselves may change and shift as we redevelop, but I think it's important because it's a different type of business out at the MOC, that we're still incorporating it into this planning because they have different needs. They need to be able to get through in large trucks and be able to badge in, whereas we don't have that same gate access need here at City Hall. So making sure that we're still assessing for that is really important, even if the site looks different in five years.
Great. Thank you. I appreciate that, and I support this item going to consent.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you so much. Just curious, two questions on this. Have we worked previously with this organization, or if this is the first time?
I'm not aware.
I'm not aware that we've worked with them before.
Okay, great. And then the other question regarding embedding this item into the budget, did we previously have a similar plan before, or is this the first time?
This is the first time, and it's been a gap and a bit of a pain point for us for a very long time. And so it came up in a lot of conversations that I was having with other directors, as well as COO files. And so we decided to be the conveners on this one and bring everyone to the table and try to get it done this biennium.
Awesome. And it's mostly, the goal is to get either one whole system or...
Yeah, and, and to be able to say, get all of the players at the table, and everyone evaluate the options. And at least everyone has been there to say, yeah, we, yes, we agree, this is the best path forward for us. And then they'll be able to help us create an implementation plan for how we start to look at different sites and what that might take. Because some sites may have to have different data pulled to it that it has right now, or infrastructure updates and doors and badge readers and all the fun things.
Great. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions for this item? Is there any objection for this going to consent? And we will see it. Director Hamilton, heading for consent. Moving on to the fourth item on the agenda is the Tree Health Assessment and Mitigation Project Update. And we are going to continue seeing Director Hamilton here. And...
All day.
All day. And is Dave Tuchek going to be continuing on as well?
Yes. So this item is a follow-up from, you guys approved this contract a few months back, and Dave and his team have been hard at work. So he's just going to give a quick update in preparation for a study session next month.
All right. Hello again. I am going to provide a brief status update regarding the Tree Health Risk Assessment and Mitigation Project. So last July, council approved a consultant agreement with Urban Forestry Services Bartlett Consulting to perform a comprehensive health and risk assessment of trees located on city-owned properties. So during the past eight months, our consultant conducted a health and risk assessment of high-priority trees located on city-owned parcels and rights of ways. Hazardous trees were risk-rated and mapped on a GIS map with multiple layers. A mitigation plan was developed to reduce or eliminate the identified tree risk hazards. Couple of the project highlights, so our consultant inspected 18,000, approximately 18,455 trees. So they were very busy. 285 trees received what we call a Level 2, higher level of risk assessment. And then 211 trees were identified as needing some type of mitigation work. So it's either going to be pruning, removal, or wildlife snagging is what it's called. So basically, just cutting the tree down to an appropriate height and then leaving it for wildlife. The next steps, this item is scheduled for the council's study session on March 12th, so coming right up. During the study session, we're going to discuss this project in depth. Topics are going to be kind of a more in-depth project overview, talk about the properties inspected, trees inspected, inspection methods, inspection results, and then recommended mitigation work. So basically, and then also next steps moving forward to actually do the mitigation work. A copy of the Final Tree Risk, Health, and Mitigation Project will be part of your agenda packet prior to the study session on March 12th.
Council, are there any questions or comments? Council Vice President Forsyth.
How far in advance do you think that we will get that information so that we can all be prepared to have a lively discussion?
Yeah, so I'm working with the consulting firm. We just had very minor edits to the document. We'll have that finished this week, and then I will be loading it into basically Granicus for, for the meeting next week.
When it's finalized, I'll email it to this, to the council so that you have it prior to receiving your finalized packet. So as soon as it's complete, Dave will send it to me, and I'll send it on.
That would be fantastic. We found it incredibly helpful with all the 2050 planning stuff, to have stuff in advance if we...
For sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the study session. My notes say that we are intending for this mitigation to actually occur in the spring, so would just be curious to hear if we're still on track for that. And of the mitigation, what are we able to do ourselves? What might need to be contracted out? Thank you.
Great.
Are there any other questions or comments? All right, well, we look forward to hearing more at our study session on the 12th. Moving on to our next item on the agenda is the Redmond Lights Event Recap for 2023.
Director Hamilton, still. I'm going to sit here with you all evening. I'm joined today with, by my Recreation Business Manager, Brittany Pratt, and our Events and Marketing Supervisor, Nicole McDonald, who will be giving an update on the, really a wonderful event that we had for Redmond Lights 2023.
Thanks for having me. I'm just going to provide a brief recap about the Redmond Lights event. We've provided some numbers about the annual winter festival for you, as well as some highlighting some of the programming that we did. The biggest change from 2022 to 2023 was we transitioned from three Friday night celebrations to one larger kickoff event that happened on December 2nd. We felt it was a successful model, and it surpassed our audience's expectations, and we're looking to replicate it this year. We have identified a date of December 7, 2024. Any questions?
Council President Kritzer.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for all the work on it. I know it was really wonderful to attend the kickoff event and just see people throughout, you know, the, the entire month enjoying Redmond Lights. And yeah, I went to the park many times to enjoy it. So, so that was really great. Yeah, one tiny thing I will say, I love the family light promenade. I went to it both years that it's been around. This year, we did a little less promenading. I think the route wasn't quite as long, and, and I felt like the first year, everyone really enjoyed lining up like they were in a parade. So if we can bring that back, I would bring that, just, you know, suggest over the future. One question I have for, for the upcoming time, because I know everyone will be excited with our new Senior Community Center and the big heritage tree that's there, are we going to be bringing that back?
So at this time, we are not planning to bring it back to City Hall Campus next year. And that's because King County is planning to do the Drunk Lion Project along this trail, and that trail is our connecting point. That's our, what, the Light Walk.
Luminary.
The Luminary Trail. Thank you, Nicole. So we've used that traditionally as the Luminary Trail. So I think, yes, in time, the goal would be to bring it back. We've heard loud and clear from the community that that is the desire, but I would really hesitate... But I would really hesitate to bring it back, knowing that that project is, you know, they think that they're talking about 2025 last that I heard. So we'd like bring it back for a year and then have to move it again. And so we likely will wait until that project is done to bring it back towards City Hall campus.
Great. Thank you. And I will say, I think the Luminary Trail that we made was really wonderful. And again, even though I had the tiny feedback on the light promenade, I hope we'll see that continuing since I think families love it.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I agree. And I'm available to help with the fashion show next year because those kiddos were the highlight of my year. Absolutely wonderful. I do have, I do have a question on locations. Well, not really a question, just something to think about as we head into budgeting season and get ready to build the budget for the next biennium. I do hope we'll consider bringing some of the energy of Redmond Lights to our other urban center, which is now going to be connected by Light Rail, the 2025 event. The Light Rail will already be open between these two centers in our community. So I do hope for some co-programming there. And I wanted to follow up. You had come to council previously and asked for feedback on the Blinker program, which I didn't see this year. I didn't hear any feedback about that at all. Did you all hear anything?
We had a few folks in person who were looking for them on the, at the kickoff event. And we had a few people reach out via email or social media. But overall, everyone was really receptive to the change, especially since it aligns with a sustainability initiative of the city.
Yeah. Well, thanks and congratulations on that change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to echo what's already been said about the kids' promenade, being able to participate both times. It was wonderfully fun, had a blast. I did have the lineup on the first year was more enjoyable for me, but that, you know, that's not, not the kids. And also hearing comments from the community around having the heritage tree lit up and whether or not that's going to be, you know, a starting point again. And of course, the luminary on the trail. So all the things that have already been said. But what I love is that there are, there's communication happening around the event, both from the community and that they feel comfortable telling us about it and what they liked and what they didn't like. So wonderful job to an intermediary, intermittent year as we're progressing. Thank you. Okay, moving on to the sixth item, moving right along. Sixth item is the 2024 Plan of Demonstration Dog Park and Community Garden. We are welcoming back Mr. Dave Tuchek. Director Hamilton is continuing on.
And we are also joined by our senior planner, Cameron Zapata. And so we're just going to give a quick update about our plans for continuing our pop-up demonstration dog parks, as well as community garden expansion.
All right. I'll just jump right in. Going to, as Lorraine said, talk a little bit about our successful 2023 installations of our dog park at Luke McRedmond Park and then also the expansion of the community gardens out at Jewel Park. And then we will discuss our plans for 2024. Going to the dog park at Luke McRedmond Park. Performance, we constructed the dog park last March and then it was operational April through September. And it required approximately eight hours a week of maintenance. So filling a lot of holes that the dogs dug, fence repairs and a lot of trash and dog waste disposal. The community feedback was overwhelmingly positive. We utilized a let's connect questionnaire during and after the demonstration period and then some of the feedback that we received. So we received 327 respondents, 262 of the respondents were dog owners. 174 from the millennial generation, 161 lived in downtown and the neighborhood in downtown. And then 82% supported or strongly supported the off-leash dog park, which is really good feedback regarding that facility. And then 75% of the users visited the park at least weekly and 25% visited the park daily. So they were down there a lot. When asked what the most positive impact would be of more off-leash dog areas, they responded at 42% safe and controlled area for dogs to be off-leash. And we hear that quite a bit. People really appreciate that about fenced off dog areas. And then also building community between users. And we observed that a lot. Not only, you know, did the dogs meet other dog friends, but then the people met people friends. And so they, and then they would set, you know, meeting dimes and meeting dates, like, hey, let's meet here on Tuesday at 2:00 in the afternoon. And so a lot of community friendships were developed, which was excellent. When asked what the most negative impact of more off-leash dog areas would be, 48% did not identify any significant concerns. They said they can't even think of any negative impacts. One, the next highest one was 16% and that would be less park space for people. And we recognize that and we take a lot of consideration with that when we're placing the dog park and also future dog parks, because we don't want to completely eliminate the other uses of the property. So it's really a balancing act, but we can do both. The budget for the two-year biennium for the dog park program is $170,000 or $102,000. 34% was spent to date, so we have quite a bit of money to activate the program again this year. Next steps in 2024, we're planning on constructing two off-leash dog parks. Again, one at Luke McRedmond Park and then one up at Hartman Park. So we've done a field trip. Staff have looked at Hartman Park and have identified an area that we think would be a really good location for a second one up there. Again, the dog park will operate April through September. And in our '25, '26 CIP budget proposal is a permanent dog park installation. So we'll see where that goes. Yep, I can roll right into community gardens if you want, or if you have any questions about the dog park. Okay, I'll go into both. Community gardens at a Jewel Park. We added 10 new garden plots and that was performed by in-house staff. We completed that in April, this, in 2023. All plots were fully reserved. Other installed amenities included the tool shed, pathways, irrigation system, and fencing. Four of the plots are raised and ADA accessible. And then ongoing staff maintenance is minimal for the gardens. It's actually a really low maintenance amenity that we have in our park system. The gardeners take care of the surrounding areas along with their actual gardens. The budget for that program is $77,500 for the biennium. We've spent approximately 54%, so we do have money left over to build additional beds. Next steps, we are really focused on building additional garden plots in the downtown core area. So we're currently looking for sites to do that. Yeah. Any questions?
And one community garden piece that I would just like to flag for council as well is that we did have a developer, Spectra, down at Marymore Village. They opened 40 community garden plots in their space as well. So we're also really looking for opportunities to partner throughout the city for these types of amenities to also be perhaps developed and controlled in a different way. And those are privately owned, but they are publicly accessible. So we worked really closely with them to open those up for people to be able to sign up for them and they filled very quickly. So I think it's really important to note that that was another piece that our planning team worked really closely with a developer to make sure that that was an amenity that was used down in the Marymore Village area.
Council Vice President Forsythe?
Thank you. This might be my favorite report that you've ever brought to us. I'm very excited about the feedback and the plans for moving forward. Excited to see this come forward in the budget for the CIP for this fall. Loved the fencing that you used and reused for the dog park. I'm interested to know if that's the same fencing that you'll be using in Hartman Park because I really do think that was, fit our sustainability goals since it was reused from other ball fields and it just looked really nice as well.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we won't be using that. And the reason is, is because we did repurpose that from our ball fields up at Hartman Park. So we don't have any more of that. Basically, we use everything down at Luke McRedmond Park. So up at Hartman Park, we're going to be using something, it's probably going to be metal T-post with welded wire. We're still working out the specifics on the materials. The other thing too is up at Hartman, the topography undulates a little bit. So it probably wouldn't work as well with that particular fencing that we used. Yeah.
So it'd be the same fencing as last year at Luke McRedmond, but different?
Correct.
Okay. And then for the community gardens, also really exciting to hear that those all filled up so quickly and that we're looking to expand. I know the initial feedback from the Parks and Trails Commission had Anderson Park as a location that they were curious about potentially having downtown community gardens. And I know there's a corner there that could potentially work. So I'm throwing my vote in for that as, as for us to look at that space. Because I know I've heard from a lot of community members that live downtown, that they would love to have somewhere that's walkable for them to, to garden.
Yeah, we are assessing Anderson Park as a possibility, that one, as well as other areas throughout the downtown corridor. The challenge with the downtown corridor is going to be that the demand is going to outstrip the amount that we're able to do. And so Anderson Park is going to be a really fine balance of how much can we do without taking away uses from other portions of the park? And so that's something Dave and his staff and Cameron as well will be looking at really closely. We did a lot of really targeted outreach around locations of dog parks at Derby Days and stuff last year, I think you'll remember. We had some feedback around community garden locations, but we want to do a little, I think, more outreach to make sure that we're hearing the community before we take that park line offline, really pretty permanently, because community gardens are a permanent installation. So yes, we're definitely looking at it and we're looking at other places too.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stewart?
Thank you so much. I appreciate the look and the materials and the data that you were able to provide for this year. This was all so that we could make a decision about something more permanent down the line and in the future. So I really appreciate the time you took to walk through the data you got this year. Do you feel like you're getting the data that you're going to need to be able to make a recommendation down the line? Or is there other data that you'll also be looking to, to gather this upcoming season?
Yeah, so we did, like you stated, got really good feedback. Some of it was targeted with questions. So I don't know, Cameron, have, I don't know if you've been thinking about some additional, maybe some different questions that we may ask the public?
Yeah, we will be updating those questions that are posted online so that they are more targeted toward the two locations.
Great. I really appreciate that, just to make sure that, you know, at the end of this two-year term, that we could make sure we have all the information we need to make a decision and honor all the time and investment that went into it. Thank you.
Council President Kretser?
Thanks for all your work on this. And I also, I see one of our Parks and Trails commissioners in the, in the audience. And I just want to say thanks to the Parks and Trails Commission for all their work on this. I think it was about two years ago that started investigating this and really, or a little over two years ago to see this actually moving forward. And it's been great to get the feedback from the community. One question I had on community gardens, oh, just, just a follow-up to, I think, some of the others is, will you be coming back to us once you choose some of those potential locations to share those out?
Yes, we will continue to update council on our progress on these projects.
Great. All right. Well, looking forward to the next iterations of these.
Councilmember Salahuddin?
Thank you. Yeah, really excited about both of these. And I think, you know, having experienced the community garden at Spectra and grabbed some tomatoes from there, it's a really nice opportunity to be partnering, you know, with these developments. My question was, you know, what's the process for reserving these plots? Is it first come, first served? I know that, you know, I don't have my own spot in that garden because there's just nothing available and I would have loved to have had that opportunity. Is that something that, you know, we're working towards instead of, I mean, I don't know what the process is, but something that can be more equitable community-wide?
So we do actually have a process that is very equitable and is marketed out. Actually, I see Cindy Johnson online. Cindy, are you listening? Because Cindy actually runs
Yes.
a community garden plots at Jewel Park. And so I think she just stayed on after the camp ones, but it's perfect timing because I think she could fill you in a little bit more on how that process works.
I did. Hi, friends. Yes, for new gardeners, we opened that up with our winter registration with the Parks Department. So it's open to the public, just like they could sign up for a basketball league or a pottery class. Once you're in the garden program, provided you are continuing to be a gardener in good standing and you're contributing your work hours, then you have an option to renew that plot from year to year. So we usually always have at least between six and 10 plots that turn over, just people don't come back. So there's always a handful more. Right now, we only have about six people on the waitlist for the Jewel Park Community Garden. So we are, the addition of those new plots has really helped to meet some of that need. And I anticipate when we open up more, we'll be able to, those will be popular as well. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council on this item?
Well, I love it because I've already asked, asked the questions or made comments that I wanted to, with the exception of, I know that with Spectra, the community gardens was a thought as, you know, as it was coming in. We've got a lot of new residents over in the Overlake area and we're going to continue bringing them online. Are we already thinking about, you know, pop-up dog parks or community gardens over there as we're developing that?
Yeah, so Cameron, our senior planner, actually works really closely with our, like, pre-app developer kind of team. And so as developers are coming into the city and looking at development agreements and incentives and things like that, Cameron is able to flag those. And she's also able to enter into conversations that say, you know, it's really great that you want to put maybe a flagpole and a bench there, but we could really use maybe some community garden plots or something like that. And so definitely looking for those opportunities wherever we can and really trying to challenge our developer community to think outside the box so that we can provide some of these things. Overlake, I think, is going to continue being a challenge because of the limited amounts of land. And yet, those developers are coming through and we're having those conversations with them. And Cameron is keyed in with our planning staff to really try to meet those needs with them as well.
Well, I love that we live in such a vibrant community that has brilliant people that can create possibilities. Councilmember Stewart, was there something that you wanted to add?
Yeah, thank you so much, Cameron, for your work on that. Do appreciate that. And council, we actually have a role in shaping that. Later tonight in our study session, we'll be taking a look at the Overlake incentive that's going on. There are also current developments happening in the Overlake Metro Center that are planning for garden plots and dog space and like that. So the market is also producing that in Overlake. Thanks.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you for that update. And we are going to be switching from seven to eight and moving into the climate resiliency and sustainability in vegetation.
All right. Yes, I promise this is my last topic for this evening, I think. Yeah, so I'm going to give you a brief update on the progress we've been making on the climate resiliency and sustainability and vegetation management plan. Very excited about this plan. It's going to be transformational in a lot of ways in our park system and our community. So just really excited about it. Last August, council approved a consultant agreement with Herrera Environmental Consultants to develop a plan related to climate resiliency and sustainability of Redmond's green infrastructure. During the past eight months, the consultant worked with staff to create the plan. The purpose of the plan is to implement strategies and actionable items resulting in healthy, sustainable natural environment. And so some of the strategies and actionable items that they have identified in the plan is, the first one is education and outreach, educating the community with the transformations that they're going to see in the, in our park systems and in our other public spaces. And then some of the stuff, strategies that we're going to be focused on is rewilding. And what that is, is converting, for an example, some of our fine turf areas in our park system to naturalized meadows or pollinator gardens or some of the regularly mowed roadside areas are going to be turned into road areas are going to be turned into roadside meadows. So lots of different things happening out there. We're also going to be working on tree canopy expansion. And I know that we've talked about this quite a bit in the city, but our consultant has actually worked with us to map specific areas, and we've worked on prioritizing those areas to actually expand tree canopy. And then we're also focusing on maintenance practices. So kind of building upon our integrated pest management program, electrifying maintenance equipment. We've talked a little bit about that. We've been actively demoing equipment. So moving in that direction, hopefully we'll be able to acquire more equipment in the future that's electric-powered. And then also just maintenance practices, like improved use of leafy material and woody debris. So leaving more tree leaves on site rather than hauling them off and then going to the compost facility. So there's a lot of different aspects of this plan. And so we're going to be talking about that at the study session in about four weeks. So March 26. You'll get the plan prior to that, so you can review it. And then we're really going to dig deep into it and discuss the different aspects of it. So.
Council Vice President Forsyth.
Thanks. Excited about this as well, especially the rewilding along the roadways. I know I often drive down 148th and think, this would be so beautiful if it were all flowers instead of grass. So hopefully that's one of the areas that they will identify. I'm sure it will be. Really interested about the composting element of this. As we heard during the pandemic, when we had to cut back on some of the mowing and just do some, some budget cuts, we heard a lot from community members about how the aesthetics of our, of that impact looked to our city. So interested to hear what plans we have for communicating this plan out to the community, making sure that we're getting out ahead of any of those stories that may develop to make sure that community knows this is helping meet our sustainability goals. This is helping meet, you know, so many different aspects of what we as a community stand for. So just want to make sure that we're getting out ahead of that, and the community is brought along with that as well.
Yes, that's actually a major part of this plan is the community education piece, because I remember in our budget process last time, we talked about irrigation. And I remember Council President Kritzer said to me, didn't we try this? And what's different now? And I said, we didn't tell our story well enough. And so we're really going to be focusing on that, and we'll share more in the study session. But I will tell you, there's a whole section on it that we reviewed and made sure that there's a community education piece, and we'll be bringing along the other divisions in our department, as well as the communications team, to make sure that we're telling that story much more comprehensively in realm of our sustainability action plan.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Council President Kritzer.
Just one follow-up on that. I think one of the, the concerns that I'd be interested in knowing that's in there, hopefully, is, is how we will make sure that things aren't impeding the right of way, because I think that was the only, the biggest concern where we heard in the pandemic, where we did a little attempt at this in some ways, but not so systematically, was, was those kinds of concerns when, you know, whether it's like in a bike lane or, you know, in an area where people are trying to walk or drive or something like that.
Right. Yeah, so definitely going to be focused on that also. And then also wanted to let everybody know that this is not just a Parks project, but then Public Works, we have representative on this, representatives from the Public Works Department on the core team of this project. So it'll be in Parks and Public Works properties. So it'll be utility properties, detention ponds, street right-of-ways. And that's the same with the previous project I was talking about, the Tree Health and Risk Assessment Cross-Department project.
That's great. I mean, this sounds like a really interesting plan. So appreciate you sending it to us early, as soon as it's available, as you mentioned.
Great. Well, we look forward to hearing more on the 26th.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And last on our agenda is the Redmond Senior and Community Center update. Director Hamilton will be staying on for this one as well.
I'm just, just get to spend this whole hour with you. It's been lovely. We're going to end it on talking about the Redmond Senior and Community Center. We are focusing on programming and opening of the community center. I'm not going to be doing a construction update. I leave that to my friends in Public Works these days. And so I really want to focus on the good work that's happening right now to prepare for the new community center. I'm going to try to keep it relatively brief and high level, but we actually do plan to come back every committee of the whole until opening, just to kind of keep you all updated on what's going on. And so the Senior and Community Center is beautiful and wonderful. I just walked through it. There's cabinetry in it. There's countertops going in. The floors are being finished. And it gets us really excited about the programming that's going to happen in that space. We had a staff meeting today, and the question that was asked was, what are you most looking forward to in the new community center? I said the walk-jog track, because I like walking and I hate when my toes get wet. So I'm really excited about the walk-jog track. But our staff has been really hard at work to figure out, how are we going to operationalize this big, beautiful, wonderful building and all of its multiple uses? We've had some staff turnover in the last couple of months, which has, I think, stretched our current staff a little bit. Amanda Demo left us, our recreation manager. And so our new recreation manager, her name is Erica Chua, will be joining us on Friday, actually. So I think Zach is probably most excited about that, as well as his supervisors, who have been without a manager. And so Erica comes to us from Minnesota and will be bringing a wealth of experience and will be a wonderful manager for that team. We've also been hiring on the new positions that we need to run that community center. And so we are currently in the process of hiring the final program coordinator, which council just approved a month ago or so, the one that will be working on Kids Zone, youth and family programs and events within that space. And so that position is in its final, I think we have final interviews actually on Friday. And so we have our fitness coordinator on, our senior program coordinators have continued to program. Marty Boggs left the city. He is enjoying his retirement, which is wonderful and lovely. And so Katie Fraser is our recreation supervisor, who will be managing that facility and the staff that is running it. The current substantial completion is the end of March, and so it is just right around the corner. The grand opening dates are currently set for May 3rd and 4th. And so Friday, May 3rd, is going to be more of a formal ribbon cutting, like all the pomp and circumstance and fun that comes with that. There will be availability for people to tour the building, but it won't be activated. It'll simply be, they'll be able to kind of walk through and see some of the spaces. Saturday is going to be a community celebration, where we will have spaces activated, fun programs going on. People can see what the center has to offer and how they might interact with it. So we're really looking forward to that grand opening and hope you all can join us. I believe that it has already been placed on your calendars as a hold. If it has not, please feel free to reach out to me, and I'll make sure you have all the details. We have set our hours for the new Senior and Community Center, and those are, and we can send this all out as well, but they are Monday through Friday, 9:00, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., with the option for facility rentals until 11:00 p.m., because most weddings don't end at 8:00 p.m. They go a little bit later. So we have that ability for people to, to keep it rented. Sunday is closed for normal operations, but can be opened for rentals. And so this is kind of our preliminary hours, and we will continue to assess them as we open, as community need either grows or wanes, and figure out what the correct hours are. We have set a fee and pass structure. As a reminder, city council helped us set the fees for rentals within the facility and permits, but we set the fees and passes for recreation programming in line with the cost of service policy. And so we have done so, and we are going to be operating on a punch pass system. So as opposed to like a monthly membership, people are able to either pay, pay per, or they can buy a larger punch pass for 20, and it's slightly cheaper for them to do that. And it's the same with the Kids Zone. They can pay to drop their kids off for one fee, or they can do a punch pass. There's a differentiation between resident and non-resident, as well as youth and seniors have a reduced rate in both of those. That's all in line with the fee policies that have been passed by city council. We have been able to set up an agreement with Silver Sneakers. Huge props to Katie Fraser for her work on that. Some of the times, those agreements actually are very difficult to set up. So she started it like a year and a half ago, I think, and finally got it over the finish line. So big thank you to Katie for that. And we do have, the plant have a lot of drop-in programming in the gymnasium, pickleball, badminton, volleyball, basketball, toddler play, all the things, as well as structured programming like our youth basketball league. We are looking at line dancing and interest groups, art classes, expanding our fitness and our adult activities. And like I said, our program coordinator is going to be starting, hopefully in the next month or so, for the Kids Zone. Our staff is creating a rental plan with prioritization of spaces, standard operating procedures, updated facility rental guides, and more. As part of the last budget cycle, you approved us to have an additional coordinator on our customer experience team, and they are kind of focused on that rental program. The fees in that rental program are set by the resolution that city council passed at the end of last year. I think that was a lot, and I think that's relatively it for today, for that update. But I'm happy to answer any questions of anything that we may have missed for you.
Councilmember Stewart.
Thank you so much for the update. So exciting. Also want to shout out the community members who are so passionate about Silver Sneakers and working with Katie on that. I have one question that I've gotten from community about how folks who donated or invested in the community campaign are being invited to participate in the grand opening festivities.
That is such a good question, Councilmember Stewart. So we actually are going to have kind of a special reception for folks who have financially invested. And so our team is still working out some of those details. I believe we agreed that it would be right before the ribbon cutting.
Correct.
Correct. So it will be kind of right prior to the ribbon cutting, and then we'll do the ribbon cutting, and then the building will be kind of open for folks to walk through. So we will be doing that, and our staff will be setting that up and reaching out to all of those people. We are own, like, this is the first time I think I've publicly said out loud when the grand opening dates are, because we kind of tried to wait as long as possible to make sure it didn't move. So we are definitely going to get those details out to folks as soon as we can.
That's wonderful. And if it were, you know, we'll come and whatever you need, we'll hang up, whatever you need.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you. That's, that's more on Eric and his team making sure we can stick to those dates, but I think we're more or less in the clear at this point.
Council President Kritzer.
Is, is it possible, I know that you all, within the authority we gave you, have set the, the different fees that will happen, but I'm sure that the minute they start to get out there, and I've already been getting some questions about, what's the payment going to look like, who's eligible for what? And I think it'd be really helpful for us to just get that information in advance and any messaging around it of like, why is it this way? Because I, I could just, I'm envisioning that everyone's excited.
Yes.
It'll open, and then they say, wait, I have to pay? So I do think that, just if you can provide council with some of that information in advance, and we can talk about it, I think that'd be helpful.
Absolutely. We can create a packet for you guys with also some kind of like FAQs for you. This is another one of those items. I think we probably finalized these fees like maybe two weeks ago, tops. So we're definitely getting there and figuring out then, how do we also communicate those out on our website and make sure that people have the information that they need? So yes, absolutely, and we appreciate your support on that, because there's about 100,000 different ways we could have set up the fee structure for this building. And we really did a lot of research on the different options. So we feel pretty confident where we've landed and are happy to share that information.
Councilmember Salahuddin.
Thank you so much. Really excited about this opening up. And I appreciate you sharing the hours. Quick question on, you know, if this has been forecasted out, especially with inclement weather, both incredibly hot and incredibly cold, is there opportunity to flex when those, you know, weather events do occur, you know, looking at, doesn't have to be open all night, but just having an opportunity to extend hours on a need-by-need basis?
Yeah, we already do that, actually, in our current facilities. So I don't know if you remember a couple of years ago, when we had those like 100-plus degree weather, we actually had City Hall open as a cooling center. And I think we were open until like 10 or 11 o'clock at night on those nights, because it was so hot, and people didn't have air conditioning in their homes. We were supported by fire and our public, our police as well. So yes. And it was part of the planning for this facility, was that it could also be utilized for those types of things. It's not a full emergency facility, mainly because of how it sits in the floodplain, but it definitely will be used for those purposes, yes.
Any other comments or questions before we wrap up? Wonderful. Well, that brings us to the end of today's agenda, all eight items. Thank you very much for hanging in there. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Well, then, looks like we are adjourned.